Good evening. I'd like to call order the March 23rd, 2022, meeting of the zoning board of appeals to start the evening. Would we all stand in the big pledge allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have, I'd like a motion for approval of the February 23rd minutes. Is there, was there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Is there, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, all right. The first 30 minutes of our program tonight is to enhance our knowledge of not only some of one of the things that affect us in terms of climate change, but it is also to help us understand a little more about the, not only the creeks we have in town, but we do a lot of work with the 100-foot setback, and it's a consideration that I think would, we need to know a little more about why it's in place, what is the impact, what's happening to the creeks, as we consider a lot of appeals that come to us. In fact, we have one, we don't have one tonight. So, we've asked Richard Maddox to come tonight to give us a presentation. Richard has a long history of working on environment and as well as local watersheds, and he has also been responsible for really getting this town certified. Are we official yet certified?
No, we're not official.
Almost official certified as a climate-sensitive community?
Climate-smart community.
Climate-smart community, which is the first step for us to do more. There's no question that we're going to see more about climate that impacts us because of our creek systems and the, and the waters, and it will come before this committee, I think, more. And so I think it's in our interest to find out a little more about it. And, Richard, we thank you very much, and go to it, sir. Is your assistant, your very able assistant, Pat, back there?
She's, she's got my back.
Okay, okay. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the zoning board of appeals. Ted, nice to see you and Madam. The Town of Hyde Park Conservation Advisory Council appreciates the invitation to provide this, the first in a series of half-hour-long environmentally-oriented educational presentations designed to aid the ZBA in understanding topics important to it. I hope you're not offended by my saying ZPA henceforth. So, zoning board of appeals can eat up a lot of time. The discussion will stop at 6:30 sharp. The further discussion on this topic could be continued in subsequent monthly meetings. Please hold your questions to the end. We'll get to as many of the, many of the questions as the clock will permit. A talking point sheet has been provided to you. Everybody's got a copy of this now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, were there sufficient copies? I've got more.
Yeah, no, we're good.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I had another one.
That's okay. Okay, to one to Serena.
A considerable amount of material is coming to your way during this introduction. We're focusing on the stream setbacks, only one of many variances you'll be considering. Stream setbacks are a huge topic for such a short introduction today. You're not going to come out of this discussion a full-blown, matriculated stream scientist. It's not the intent. Each of the points listed below could be subject of a lecture, or a course, or even a profession. Intent here is to identify areas that are a potential concern, and to prepare you to grasp the level of understanding the applicant of a variance has of the potential impact of the requested variance. Is the spokesman, is the spokesman of the applicant sufficiently trained in the area of concern? Have the potential concerns been adequately anticipated in project planning? In summary, these are the takeaway messages of the next few moments of discussion. Number one, the code is set by stage, sets your stage. 100-foot setback is the law. Applicants have the responsibility for justifying any variance. When appropriate, the opinions of a certified experienced professional are also required. The most salient technical scientific issues are to be discussed and addressed today. Stream setbacks are a regulatory measure to provide safety, privacy, property land integrity, and environmental benefit. Stream setbacks can increase property value, reduce property loss, protect water quality, enhance wildlife habitat, contribute to the natural beauty of the land, and reduce maintenance time and associated expenses and costs. Setbacks promote, preserve, and enhance the hydrologic, biological, ecological, aesthetic, recreational, educational functions of streams, river corridors, associated riparian areas, and wetlands. As you know very well, the code sets the town's stream setback at 100 feet, either way of the center line. From time to time, applicants may offer alternative distances which may be acceptable if the change is reasonable and performed in a regulated fashion. As such, the ZBA may authorize, with conditions, land use which is otherwise not allowed or is prohibited by the code, provided that the variance is reasonable and does not have a significant adverse effect. Level of review is controlled by the size and importance of the variance. More complex situations require a higher level of security. In such cases, the applicant would employ the services of an experienced consultant, appropriately certified in the area of expertise, for example, hydrology, wildlife biology, ecology, conservation, habitat biology, botany, or forestry. This depends on the nature of the issue at hand. A professional engineer's PE stamp at the end of a name does not necessarily imply the level of knowledge that is warranted. Important to understand is that the ZBA is not justifying a variance. The applicant must justify the variance or the satisfaction of the ZBA. However, the ZBA must have sufficient understanding to discern that the necessary points are declared by the applicant. In preparation of this presentation, we reviewed the code and the fundamentals of stream science and came up with the hot-button points for use when listening to variants, please. This is all about defining the potential impact of the variance. To illustrate the degree of impact, the applicant addresses at least these checkpoints, at least these checkpoints. How does the variance impact the function or role of the, excuse me, of the stream? Does the design associated with a variance consider precipitation intensity, for example? A review, I really find this interesting, a review of daily rainfall precipitation records of a local amateur climatologist, somebody spitting distance from here.
The wife of the former chairman of this committee?
That I wouldn't say. I wouldn't say that.
Okay, all right.
So, I didn't.
You didn't say that. You didn't say that.
Thank you. During the past 35 years, three times, five inches fell in a 24-hour period. This is what's referred to as a 10-year storm. Two times, six inches fell in a 24-hour period. That's a 25-year storm. You might remember Lee, and those of us of an age might remember Tammy, Tammy, I think it was a tropical storm as opposed to a hurricane. Once in the last 35 years, eight inches fell in a 24-hour period. That's a 100-year storm, folks. Once, 10 inches fell in a 24-hour period, that is a 200-year storm. Now, the NOAA precipitation event tables are affixed to your talking points. This is the most recent one I can find. I don't think it's been updated since then. This is to aid you in identifying what the correlation is between rainfall and storm categorization. NOAA, of course, means National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. So, why is this important? Well, Cornell did a little study for you, folks. They looked at all the culverts of significance here in the Town of Hyde Park. Here's their map. This is their finding. This isn't just Cornell. They also worked with a number of other agencies to put this together. So, they looked at the culverts, and here's their, figuring by the report, and to identify those culverts which 10-year storm, 25-years, 100-years. I don't think there's any that even can pass a 50-year storm in the town. So, this map and this report is here at the town for you to review. It's your pleasure. However, the stream for which the applicant is requesting a variance is part of and contributes to a larger watershed. So, its stream is part of a watershed. The ZBA would like to hear from the applicant as to the potential impact of the stream variance on the function and role of the watershed. And the potential impact is largely dependent on, and the importance of the stream in terms of the watershed is largely dependent on the relative size of the watershed as a whole. Now, watershed is, of course, an area of land with a single common point of discharge. That's the simplest. There's much more complicated answers than that, but as I said, you see a piece of land where all the precipitation that arrives on that piece of property comes out at a single point. That's the watershed of that drainage point. In both the cases of streams as well as watersheds, the ZBA would also like to see what the impact of the variance is going to have on recreational uses, on commercial uses. Also, what's the impact of the variance on downstream? Does the variance protect those who are downstream? Does it even consider the people downstream, people in infrastructure downstream? What responsibilities does an applicant have for the well-being of the downstream? We did mention watershed a little bit later, a little bit earlier. I failed to mention to you. This is a, as you can see, this is Town of Hyde Park, Clinton, Pleasant Valley, Town and City of Poughkeepsie. You'll see this lighter color here in the middle. That is the Fall Hill watershed. You know where the Fall Hill Creek is. It's over by the emergency training center and the baseball diamonds and over there. But guess why? And you know that, of course, the Fall Hill, daylights are discharge drains into the Hudson, down to the Children's Museum. 38 miles upstream, up in Clinton, is the source, one of the sources, the principal source of the Fall Hill watershed. 38 miles, 19.1 miles square area is what the watershed is. Interestingly, 65% of the Fall Hill Creek and 55% of the watershed itself is in Hyde Park. Important point to carry away here is when people are coming for a variance and requesting that, are they considering what their impact is downstream? Folks all along the watershed are affected by those upstream, and they in turn are impacting those, potentially impacting those downstream. The variance applicant will also, variance applicant will also need to address at least these following points. What's the potential impact on erosion? By installing this variance, will there be any impact on streambeds' stability? Will there be any impact on the ability of the water, of the stream to control velocity of the flow, the water flow? Does the variance have any impact on potential overflow out of the banks into surrounding areas of the watershed, of the, the stream body? All of these things have to do, of course, with turbulence, aggressive behavior, suspending particulates, making particles in suspension. If they go into suspension in the water, they gotta discharge, they gotta stop someplace, they gotta drop someplace. So, downstream sediment, what's the impact of the variance on downstream sediment load and deposition? We suspend it here, who gets it? What is the potential impact of floodplains and temporary floodwater storage? Is there a preservation, given the variance is accepted and installed, is there a preservation of the natural and beneficial flow buffering function of floodplains? You've got a large amount of precipitation up yonder, coming down through here. You've got a supercharged flow. Does it get stopped up and slowly meter itself out, which is what you would like to have happen, or is it just going to roar down on top of everybody? Does the variance have a potential of impacting in that regard? Are residents and infrastructures, we've addressed that a little bit earlier, at risk? What about flood control and downstream vulnerabilities? Are there any potential impacts on flood control and, and infrastructure and people downstreams, residences, et cetera? Is there any suggestion that the stream might migrate into the variance area over time? So, you've got yourself a nice stream pattern. You've set the variant of the setbacks. Now, wait a second. What happens if the stream meanders over this direction, meanders over that direction, which you know very well can happen in certain circumstances? Is the applicant and the applicant's expert taking this into consideration? Are there slopes or firm breaks in geology which might otherwise suggest a more logical nature-based buffer boundary rather than the standard 100 feet? What's the potential impact on shading? In general, streams benefit by shading. Any proposed shrub and tree clearing along the water's edge should be considered carefully. What's the, what's the significance of shading? Has a lot to do with water warming, water temperature. So, what? Well, you've got organisms, and you've got temperature-related biological processes that are taking place that are associated with the, the temperature of the environment that they live. How does the variance impact habitat and habitat protection? Specifically, let's talk about the aquatic and terrestrial habitats and transition zones and riparian zones. So, that's where feeding takes place. That's where breeding takes place. That's where the, the critters are laying their eggs and rearing their youngs, and this is where migration is occurring. What about the impact of the variance potentially on the wildlife community interconnectedness? Now, within a critter's area, it's got a ecological area, a ecosystem, a biosphere that it's living within, but quite often, at various stages in their life patterns, they go from one place to another. We've heard about amphibian crossings. Just here recently, there's quite a bit of discussion about folks actually going out and standing on the streets and getting cars to stop while amphibians are actually going from their wintering place to their vernal pools for their breeding purposes. This interconnectedness. Also, what's addressed here on the, the Cornell work is the culverts. Those critters that have to go from downstream to upstream or upstream to downstream, do they have to pack ladders on their back to jump up into the culvert to get to the other side, which, and if they otherwise would require a ladder, what you've got is interruption in the connectivity of that critter's biosphere. That's one of the reasons why we're, we're, we try to be sure that there's the stream, there's the culvert, the critter doesn't need a ladder to get up and over and down. Another thing that's really kind of interesting is that the New York National Heritage Program and I, Sonia have done several, they've mapped several what's referred to as significant natural areas in Hyde Park, and these are rare or very high-quality natural communities that include everything from coastal wetlands to upland forests. So, these are very important habitat areas, and what's the potential impact of the variance on those areas? How does the variance impact the stream's ability to treat water? Well, water treatment in a riparian streambank area, what it does is that through natural vegetation setbacks often provide a natural biodegradation and filtration zone to trap and decompose sediment, some chemicals, and many nutrients before they get to the stream. What's the potential impact of the variance on that natural filtration zone? This is particularly true for most situations where groundwater also migrates towards the stream and maybe away from the stream in some regard. What about water treatment of the water itself? So long as there's sufficient dissolved oxygen present in the water, naturally occurring microorganisms, microscopic organisms are biologically treating the water. Trout, they need their seven, eight parts per million oxygen, dissolved oxygen in the water. Carp, eh, one, two, parts per million, et cetera, et cetera. As long as that's there, organisms are going to be able to, and microscopic organisms are going to be present and able to treat any, treat potential pollutants in that body of water. Dissolved and suspended compounds and particulates undergo natural chemical degradations as well.
Richard, will we get a chance to look at these charts?
If you, if you, excuse me, sir, may I finish just this last paragraph? Yes.
The crescendo is coming.
It's, it's building.
Okay.
In summary, we focused here on streamback, stream setbacks, only one of many types of variants, of variances you'll be reviewing. Stream setbacks are a huge topic for such a short introduction period here. In summary, these are the takeaway messages from this discussion. The code sets their stage. 100-foot setbacks law. The applicant has the responsibility for justifying a variance. When appropriate, opinions of certified experienced professionals are required. The most salient technical scientific issues have been addressed, and I look forward to hearing from your chairman of any questions you may have. Thank you, and good luck.
Let's go down, let's go down and look at these charts. As we go down, I know I'm remembering the fishing that's going on in the Cromelbo near the Moose Lodge. You have trout there, others there.
They stop.
Okay, and, yeah, this is all, yeah, yeah. And, Richard, where's the, where's the far, the church, Cromelbo Road here? So, it's up.
Your way there, your finger there.
Okay, yeah. This is what we've been looking at. You can see that it has an impact on, and it goes down through Poughkeepsie into the lake right down here.
Into the river, sorry.
No.
You live there for a long time.
Yeah, it's a long, yeah, okay. Now, you have all the culverts here, and they are marked in terms of, this is interesting, because in terms of how they are prepared for flood risk, you can see we're not well-prepared. And what we are seeing now, over the next 20 to 30 years, is the rate of heavy ground, downpours are going to increase, the amount is going to increase, and so these are going to be even more dangerous to us in terms of, in some cases, where we have built, and Roosevelt, where is Roosevelt? Right here. Okay, this is a, this is a.
This one, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And this is just, I've been driving around here quite a bit lately. These streams that are here are 1/10 of the numbers, actual unnamed streams that are between the houses and in front of the house. It's pretty amazing.
The reality is, nobody should have built it, but they did. So, as we look at that for future, it's gonna be, we really need to consider a lot of the, Richard has told us that I.
It's out of there.
Excuse me.
Right now, right here.
Yep. So, this is Hyde, is this boundary Hyde Park?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Now, they, they studied this. Did they draw any conclusions?
They presented the reports and presented them to the town.
Is this, this is the report?
This is the report.
Okay. Are we able to, that's your copy of the report?
This is actually the Hobbie's.
Oh, okay, okay.
But I can hear another copy. Who are you folks that you would like to have? That map, by the way, is yours.
Yeah. Do we want, anybody that'd be interested in this report? I mean, not the member I just didn't have.
Yeah.
Yeah, you should have a reference, you should, yeah, that's what you should.
I'll get the arrangements for you folks and your copy of them.
Okay.
And I only have one of these, but you're welcome to this as well if you're something like.
Why don't we keep it for a little bit, and then we probably need to get another. We need, we definitely need to get, maybe just do that, Richard. That would be, Cordell or Merck, Fresh?
I'll, I'll grab the copy and have it on me.
Okay.
Thanks.
Very good. Questions, John?
This year's pretty amazing.
Thank you.
Many of the severe breakers are.
Yeah.
You noticed that. You noticed that, huh?
I have very.
I was looking for one of these. Do you have that?
Well, you know, the question here is, and I'm not sure I know, is how much of this, this moves, this moves up here? In the 10-year, when, when, when was this established?
I believe that uses the current, which you folks have.
Current, okay.
100-inch, 100-years storm. The general metric is eight inches.
Okay, all right, so, eight inches, four inches.
So, what makes a nine-year, what constitutes a nine-year?
That's where they'll need a small, something like that. 100 inch, 100 years long, the general metric is eight inches.
Okay, all right, so eight inches, four inches. So what makes a line area constitute a line area?
That's where they'll need a small line or a, something like that. And I know it's a little bit difficult, I apologize, but they actually defined that certain, certain, there's some of them, you know, it's a drop off, one is a drop off, others are, like service, which is.
Yeah, great, good. Richard, this is very helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do you want, you want, want to take it with you?
This is yours, Richard. And that is yours.
Okay, and that's yours, back?
I'm going to take this because I know how it would not be happening.
Okay, and, and that, so, I'm going to take that.
I'm going to take this.
Okay.
Go see somebody else, it's now, figure out, it's taking me an hour to make something.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Maddox, that was excellent information for us, and I think it.
Thank you.
I think it sets us a good start in terms of understanding more of what the zoning board is going to be facing in terms of the 100-foot setback for streams in Hyde Park area. Let's continue on, the next issue is Rite Aid Pharmacy. We have a proposal for a variance in the Rite Aid on the signage. Good evening.
Good evening.
Gentlemen, I need a, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
So, good evening, thank you very much. My name is Grace and I'm a graphic designer for Glody Sides. I know you've had Nancy here before you, and I believe I was here once.
Correct.
For, for the Rite Aid signs. We have requested some variances and, so I believe everyone has a packet of images and I have instructions from Nancy, so. Okay, so our first page, we're looking at wall signage, the elevation for Crum Elbow, the front sign.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we are requesting that, let's, all right, so above we have the existing sign and it is 40 square feet of signage. We are requesting that you give us 63 and a quarter square feet for this new sign.
You're going from 40 to 60?
Forty to 63 and a quarter, yes.
Okay.
It does, we do need to increase the size of the logo to 30 inches and the letters would be 21 inches.
Yeah, okay, let me, part of the discussion, I think, this went to the, the County Duchess Department of Planning.
Yes.
And their recommendation actually was to not grant the variance because of the size of that. Now, we have had this discussion and I know if, you, you right now have the logo at 30 inches.
Mm-hmm.
And my question to you is, are you able to accept 24? And the subsequent variance, the adjustment that would have in the other signage, because I'm sure you do it to scale relative to the.
Yes, they would want to have it to scale, I'm sure.
So, my question is, if, we are still beyond the code right now, 20, let me say, 24, I think would be much more attuned to what we would be, you know, what might be acceptable.
Okay.
And so my question to you is, is that something that would be acceptable to you?
Yes, I think that our client would agree to a 24-inch logo with letters at the relative size.
Okay.
Based on scaling that.
David, may I jump in as well?
Sure.
So in addition to the size considerations, and we can get you a copy of this, I am unsure if the ZBA secretary sent you the most recent response from Duchess County Planning?
I do have something dated the 21st, is that?
Yes, so you're working with the same information and that correspondence indicated that there were duplicative signs, that they felt, the county felt there was kind of a redundancy and that perhaps eliminating some of the signs as recommended in that letter would lower the square footage to bring you more into compliance. So not just the size of the sign and the lettering, as David mentioned, which we would also advocate for, but that there are certain signs they think are not necessary. And based on that, and until that changed, they recommended that the variances not be granted by the board. And to counter that, we would need a super majority and then a justification as to why the board went against the county's recommendation.
Okay, so.
So if you would look at that letter and, and as.
Yes, okay. Well, they're specifically referring to the additional wall sign, which is labeled on the drawing R12. It's two pa, in my packet, it's two pages away from where we were.
Yeah, okay.
And they, there is an existing sign there now.
Right.
And so we were asking for replacing that sign with one that is just about the same square footage.
50 to 54.
Yes.
Okay.
And I believe they felt it was duplicative and unnecessary. However, it's not visible from the other sign.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm not really certain why, as a wall sign, they felt it was duplicative.
Okay, I, I hear your point.
You know, it does add a drive-through notation, which they did bring up as, let's see, there is a sign R2, which.
R2?
I will need to find, I believe it's one of the safety signs that they felt made it, yes. There is, there is a page of safety signs. They look, there are four square foot signs, I believe.
Right.
So they felt that that sign would be unnecessary.
The R2?
Um, if we remove the R12, which I don't know that that would be necessarily the right answer, that this, R2, let's see, if R12 is retained, it already includes the drive-through messaging and directional arrow, and thus R2 should be removed.
Okay.
So I could see, yes, we could certainly get rid of the safety sign, since it is on the building. It, it seems to me that that sign on the building is the one that is going to be most noticeable and easiest for the customers to understand the direction.
Yeah, coming in.
And that's basically what the safety sign is for, to make sure they understand the direction to the drive-through.
So you're, what you're suggesting is we eliminate R2 because we keep the drive-through pharmacy with the arrow on the building?
That is what I would recommend, yes.
You're in R2. I'm sorry. Just try me again.
Keep R12, get rid of R2. Is that right?
I would, I would like you to consider keeping R12.
Yeah.
But we could eliminate R2, certainly if that is one of the duplicates. If that works for everyone.
That address, that starts to address.
Okay.
Some of the square footage, how?
You want to get rid of the small one?
This, this one.
Keep the one on though.
Right, okay.
Keep the one on.
Keep R12.
Yeah, because it's not visible from that side of the, because there's no sign that's visible, right?
Right. So the small drive-throughs on the west side of the building, you would eliminate and you would keep the drive-through sign on the building?
I, yes, I think that that would be the most customer-driver friendly.
Okay.
Way to do it.
I just want to ask Ted, their building is kind of unique in my mind, is that they use all four sides of the building.
Yeah.
There's very few places that do that. Do we give any, any kind of exception or give consideration that people are coming from one side and people are coming from another side?
I think the consideration that's given is if there's a second entrance that's so many feet from the first one, that the planning board can grant a second freestanding sign. This one already has a second freestanding sign that meets that criteria, so I'm not sending it back to the planning board for.
Right.
For that, since it was approved on a site plan.
Okay.
Is that?
That sounds good to me. That makes me understand that there is something that was done.
I think R12.
That is one, that is one of the variances, is for the second freestanding sign, right, is what you're saying? Correct.
I think R12 makes sense because if you come in that way, you should see that big sign, otherwise people are going to go left of that wall. People don't pay attention when they drive.
Not, not, not in that lot. Okay. So where are we in terms of, we're going to keep, we want to keep the one on the building?
Keep R12, scratch R2.
And R2?
Where are they going?
Well, we got R2 here, but it is located, fresh my memory in terms of R2, its location is on the, relative to the building, R2 we're eliminating and it is, where is R2?
It calls out that it's located adjacent to wall sign R12.
That doesn't help.
So perhaps in that picture, nope.
I can't quite make the picture out where it is.
Um, is it off of, is it off of Crum Elbow or is it off of 9G?
Well, this one, this one is in the corner by the books and by the gas station across the street.
Okay.
This one, I can't, might be, I have no idea. I can't quite make those out where.
Which one?
The one in the middle.
R3.
R2 and R3 are.
And then R2, do you know where R2 is?
That's coming in that sideways entrance, right?
Which, which?
9G entrance?
Which, which is off of Crum or off 9G?
9G.
Okay.
Is that where R2 is?
Yes.
It's now, this label is E3, but it's changing.
All right.
So we keep R12, scratch R2. They also don't like R5, which faces the mobile station.
Yeah, R5 is typically blocked, it's in the corner there and it's blocked by cars.
Yeah, you don't usually see it, I don't think.
I don't see that.
Well, I don't have any idea where R3 is.
R3, if you look at the curve, let's see.
You don't have a placement map?
I do not seem to.
All right.
Isn't R3 the main entrance?
What, main entrance meaning?
Because I see the curve of the road.
It may be, yes, it may be that you go down this way to the drive-through, actually.
The main entrance off of Crum Elbow.
You come in like this, so you're coming by and you come in?
Right, curve in.
It's, it's pointing right, so you want to turn right, you want to go around the building.
Pointing left.
R2, I'm sorry, I beg your pardon, you're correct.
It's actually the bad location, maybe Ted's.
Okay.
Ted, thank you.
R3 is, is off of Crum Elbow.
Yeah.
And, but it is handling cars that are coming through the, through the parking lot.
Okay.
And telling them to turn left in terms of the drive-in.
Yeah, yes. I think I used it once.
So that's once, okay. So R2.
Does that make sense to get rid of that?
Yeah, okay, good, okay, R2 makes sense. And R5 makes sense, R5's down here. That's blocked.
Well, they, they are, they are replacing existing signs, so.
Yes, but what we're trying to do is lower your square footage.
Thank you, yes.
And which signs could be eliminated, and I think what we're seeing is R2 and.
R5.
R5.
Might be unnecessary.
Here, Jim.
Well, I think it starts before that. I know you discussed the wall sign, R12, but the county's position is that R12, the wall sign, is duplicative and unnecessary because of the existing second freestanding sign. So it seems that one of those would have to, like, one or the other is only deemed necessary.
Sorry, are you talking about the pillar signs?
I'm just, yes.
Away from the building.
Okay.
My apologies, thank you, sir.
Do you see the big pillar signs, Jerry?
Yeah, I do.
The big pillar signs?
Mm-hmm.
We've got one here and one here.
And the county states that since the freestanding sign serves the purpose of alerting passersby to the existence of the business, that may be the more important sign to retain. So if you were to eliminate R12, then, it says the proposed R2 should only be retained if R12 is removed. So if you move R12, then you keep R1 and R2, and then we have to deal with R5.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me suggest, let me suggest this in terms of, that we take down R2 and we take down the other, R5, and we take down the one tower, the pillar sign, which I think is R1.
Mm-hmm.
And a couple of things will happen there. One is we have, you have the square footage down, you still have the sign on either side, and I think, I, I'm not uncomfortable with that. So the square footage is down, we use the 24-inch in terms of the logo, and I think we're, we're pretty close there. I, I mean, I don't, you know, the county is recommending this and I appreciate that, and I think we need to consider that.
Okay.
So what I'd like to do is if you would take that back for consideration, and if that, let us know how that will impact, what you think you need.
Okay, all right, so that would be eliminate R2 and R5.
Right, and eliminate R1 if I have a.
And R1, that one freestanding sign?
Yes.
Okay. Not knowing the site as well as most of you, I'm sure, that is the sign, the freestanding sign on the road, so eliminating that, you said you, we would then keep R12, the wall sign.
Correct.
Is that enough for people looking for the Rite Aid to know? Is that enough for people looking for the rite aid to know that that's where they enter?
I think we, we think it is.
Excellent, okay, all right.
I would, I would think that the freestanding is more important than the one on the wall.
And R2 would be looking at the wall, we're going to look at the freestanding.
You, you know, I think you've got, you, you people have a better, your, your firm has a better sense of how people look at these things. He looks one way and I look the other way, and, so, we'll, we'll use your judgment on that.
Okay. But, so either eliminating R1 and keeping R12?
Mm-hmm.
Or eliminating R12?
And keeping R1.
And keeping R1.
May I, may I just make one little suggestion?
Of course.
The drive-through portion that is of R12, does that have to go with the rite aid sign?
Because we've eliminated the drive, eliminated the drive, drive-through sign, which is right here, that points, so this is the point that.
But, I mean, could, could you do without the rite aid and just use the sign from the road?
Well, but we've now eliminated the other rite aid sign.
Well, that's what I'm saying, could we, because if you, keep that sign, when you turn in, then the drive-through sign says, go this way. I, I don't know, sequential for me.
If you would give us your best.
Absolutely, okay, yeah.
I think keeping the sign by 9G makes sense, because when weather and visibility is crappy, which it often is, and it's nighttime, people need to.
The one on the wall?
Yeah, the one, the mine bed one.
The, the one on the wall which is lit?
No, but the one by the road.
Oh.
If you take that away, you're going to have people would challenge visibility or eyesight, and they're going to just drive right by it, because they should be watching the road, not the building. So, I say keep it.
That was the county's point.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right.
All right, we can definitely.
Let's do that, and we'll, I, I then need a.
Well, before we move on, David, if you don't mind, Chair?
Oh, yes.
Just two, in speaking with the zoning administrator on the EAF that was submitted, I think the most recent one dated November 17th, 2021, number five, just if the board wants to acknowledge a change, that it was indicated that the proposed action was consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, but we've determined that it would not be, so we just wanted to make that change on the record.
Okay, do we need a motion to that?
Do you have anything to add?
No.
No.
Okay.
No, just on the record.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
Does that precipitate on doing anything else?
All right. Good. We're going to, we're going to get this resolved. We thank you for your patience, and this has helped, all of the documents you've sent have helped clarify, so hopefully we can get you on your way.
Okay, yes, I'm sure they would like to wrap this up.
As long as, just ensure that the new version, because it's a lot of math.
Right.
And we've reviewed it and revised it and looked at it, but if it's going to change the logo to 24, which the board has indicated is more likely to be approved, please factor that into your calculations, and then any signs you remove, obviously for the cumulative square footage, take that into consideration as well.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I, we need a motion to continue the public hearing. I would move, is there a second?
Motion to continue the public hearing.
Okay, second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
April 27?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, to the, to the next one, is April 20?
7.
7. Wow, okay. Thank you again.
Thank you.
It's good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on. Just a, a note for the record, we are canceling the, I think we'll need a motion to cancel the public hearing on Speedway application. They have subsequently withdrawn their request, so I would look for a motion to cancel. Second? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, good. Um, let's move on, and, um, a new public hearing, Thompson? Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. We, we recognize you from last time.
So, I, I do have a question, my name's David Freeman, I'm the architect for the project. I know these pictures were in the planning board packet, I don't know if you had these or not.
Why don't you share those, we'll, we'll happy to.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I'm still lost with the sign thing, so.
May I have one too, please?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, we need to, a motion to open the public hearing on.
Second.
Thompson, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And you are again, Mr. Freeman?
Uh, my name's David Freeman, I represent the owners of Three Pond Road, as we work to legalize an accessory apartment.
Okay.
So, um, as I said, told before, in 1983, Mr. Thompson opened up a building permit for a two-story garage attached to his house. If you look at the parcel, the picture I just handed you is actually on the left-hand side. I made the joke to the planning board that in 1983, he probably went to your building department, they said, don't worry about the second floor, we were, I've been in Hyde Park a long time, we were a little bit looser with things we did then. The accessory apartment that was constructed on the second floor has been there and been occupied since 1983. So, as part of the process, we have been to planning board workshop, and then when we go ahead with them, meeting their criteria, it's greater than 400 square feet, the bedroom, the access to the outside, the percentages, we are well within all that. For planning board, we do have a discussion with the planning board that we will need to address about the Board of Health requirements, so that's part of their process, so I'm here tonight to ask you for an area variance.
Okay.
So, as I said, this has existed as a building since 1983, so we are not technically increasing the density of the site, we are increasing the number of families on the site. And when I look at this, it's, it was well-designed, you know, it's, it's very well-hidden from the road, it's not a visible addition, it's mostly roof that goes up. The parcel actually opens up onto the apartment complex, the apartment complex is actually, owns a strip of land down behind this house, between this house and Route 9, so there are no neighbors to the rear, there are neighbors to the left and neighbors to the right. Pond Road is actually a road of one-family homes, but if I go out on Big Meadow Lane and continue up Big Meadow Lane, I do come to a multifamily house, and I do come then to the large-scale apartments and the condominiums that are up there. So, with me, it does fit within the character of the neighborhood that has developed over time. And as I said, I don't think, we're not increasing density per se, as far as the actual square footage of the building on the lot, we are increasing the number of family density, and as long as we can get by the Board of Health, or get the Board of Health approval for the septic, and that will be our next kind of step, that's my spiel for tonight.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, it's been an accessory apartment since 1983, and you may not know the answer, but has there any, been any, has there been any complaints or anything since, since it's been an apartment?
Not that I know of, there may be a neighbor here to speak about it, but I don't.
Not that I know of.
And how is it going to be used if?
So, so, within planning board, there has to be a family member that lives in the home, and Dolores Thompson now lives in the home. With that, and that's, that's always when we're in planning board, they can sell the property, if there's not a family member living in the home, they can't rent the apartment. I am assuming they would rent it out, it's, it's a small apartment, it has a loft space for a bedroom, so it's not going to be, it's, it's going to be one or two people at the most.
Rent it out, not necessary to a family member, just?
No, right.
Okay.
So, if it's sold, you're saying that the probability is that they'll rent the apartment?
If it's, I can't speak for the next people, it does, it has value, it has value at a sale, obviously, to have an accessory apartment there, and whether that would be, however the next people use it.
Is there a plan to sell it as a now?
No.
Not now?
No, the, the mother is very happy living there, so.
Why do they want to legalize it?
It's a good idea. No, I mean, it's, you know, and I do this a lot, I have three other projects, as, as we're going through, you try and legalize something before you come up to the, oh my goodness, I got my house, it's in closing, and I got to report back that there's no CO on this, so it's, it's a good time for them to legalize it.
So, it's planning for the future of selling it?
Yes.
My concern is we have no control over once it's sold.
Um, she does. So, the planning board requires that a family member, the owner has to live in the house in order to be able to rent it as an accessory apartment, you can't, you can't rent it to two separate families, the owner has to live there, that's within town law.
Yeah, I will say, I'll conceptually understand what you're saying, but in, in all reality, that, that's hard to police, though.
Right.
It is hard.
Right.
Based on experience.
I know.
Yeah. It's been taxed as a single-family house.
It has been taxed, it has been taxed, the square footage, though, has always been, has been taxed, so that the square footage for the apartment does show up on your tax rolls, and so it has been taxed as far back as I can look.
My question is, if it's converted into an accessory apartment, then the taxes will change?
I, I doubt it, the square footage is there, so it's already being taxed, the square footage of the property.
It's taxed on square footage.
Yes.
Okay. It wouldn't tax it if, would it tax it differently? Ted, do you know?
Oh, I have no idea.
I'm sorry?
I don't know.
Okay.
Well, Serena did, the ZBA secretary did look into that, and we can verify it with the assessor, it is taxed under Code 210, which is a single-family dwelling, there is a separate Code 220 for both two-family and a single-family with accessory apartment. It's my inclination that despite the square footage being taxed, the two uses would have led to an increase in the taxes.
Okay.
For the past, what, 30?
Forty years.
Forty years.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and there are some towns that go back for that.
What is the, if, if you don't get the variance, what are your options?
Um, so, as part of planning board, we, this, right now, there is no interior stair to the apartment, it's required by planning board.
There's no interior?
There's no interior stair from the first floor of the apartment. Mr. Clayton had actu, Mr. Thompson had actually planned for it, so there is actually an opening that had been filled in, so as part of the accessory apartment, we do need to install an interior stair. If we didn't receive approval, the interior stair will simply go the other direction from the existing house, we'll connect it to the existing house, and it'll be used as a family room.
Okay, okay.
You mentioned the septic, you're working that out with?
So, that will, as I said to the owner, I, engineers, we need to retain an engineer to then go back, examine the septic, that's part of the planning board approval, there, there are charges to make sure it's approved by Board of Health. My opinion is, I would rather get through ZBA first, if possible, before we incur the cost of an engineer.
Would the septic tank have to be changed or enlarged?
It's listed as a four-bedroom house right now, I believe I can maintain a four-bedroom house, so I don't be, I don't believe there'll be any changes.
Clearly is, I mean, it's clearly, this is something that's, I'm concerned about you're, you're less than a half acre, and the requirement now for a house, as you know, is at, at least a half acre, and we have an apartment plus an apartment, so we're probably at an acre.
Right.
So, we're, we're allowing probably a 200% variance in terms of the space you have.
Right, it's, it's over 50% variance, obviously. As I said, it has been there for over 40 years, so depending on how you look at, I look at density on a lot, so the density on the lot is not changing, we're not adding on another building, we're not adding on an accessory space, we are maintaining the same density. We're not, we're not increasing the footprint of the building, we're not increasing the blacktop area, it's been there almost 40 years.
But, and I, and I appreciate that, the, I guess the only thing I'm, I'm thinking is, there's something you can't control in terms of what happens when it's sold, and it will be sold, in terms of who else lives there?
Right.
In that apartment, and what type of traffic, and how that might change the character of the neighborhood. I mean, you can't, there's no way you can guarantee that.
No, and I can't guarantee that now. I, you know, I mean, again, within the way the town code is set up, in the ideal world, the owner has to live there, and the projects I've been involved with in Hyde Park and Newburgh and Poughkeepsie to do this, that has been the requirement. Now, is that, is that easy to police? No, but my guess would be after the first, first complaint of 14 marriages, students living there, someone will be down there, so.
Who wants to create that problem?
Right.
Also, that we heard that there is potentially deed restrictions that said one family for those particular lots in, in the subdivision.
Right, and so, again, I think that, I went back and did kind of a deep dive within the deeds, so within the deed for, the current deed for Pete, Three Pond Road, for this property, there is no deed restriction listed. On the adjacent property, Five Pond Road, it references a deed restriction from the original sale, 1955, probably when the subdivision was created. I went up Big Meadow Lane, there was, in one of the parcels there, a deed restriction for single-family homes. Obviously, to me, and again, I don't, within that one, there was no enforcement, so while there was a restriction, there was no listing of who was to, what, what party that was answerable to, and that's generally the two parts of a deed restriction, there's the restriction and then who answers it. Within that, I found the, the deed restriction on Big Meadow Lane, so my assumption is going throughout that entire subdivision, they are restricted to single-family homes. That ship has kind of sailed up there. There is another parcel up the street that has at least two buildings on it, we get back into the apartment complex and the condominiums, and again, I didn't, not going that deep into it, I'm not an attorney, so, and I don't believe the town recognizes deed restrictions.
Okay.
I would concur that the ZBA is under no obligation to consider deed restrictions or restrictive covenants, it was brought to the attention of the board, so it will be evaluated. I would double-check, because I know that the deed from 2004, which I believe is the most recent deed, references prior restrictions and continues those, and I, unless I am incorrect, I didn't print it, because there was a cost, right?
Yep.
I'm not going to do that to the taxpayers, but I am quite confident that the restrictions in the deed from just a few years before this one, when I think the Mr. Thompson transferred it to Mrs. Thompson, solely definitely listed it as a one-family.
Okay.
That it was limited in that.
Yeah, like I said, I did, I did find another parcel that had the actual restriction.
Oh, no, I'm only focused on this parcel.
I know, but I mean, I, I am assuming it went throughout the subdivision, so I know you're focusing on this one.
Okay.
So, if that were the case, though, then, and it's restricted by a covenant, then, I mean, does that change into how your plan is? I mean, because then that just opens you up to a different type of potential issue.
Then I would have to go back to the owner, we, the owner and I have talked about that, and, and as I said, we do have, if we don't receive a variance in approval, the space will still be used, instead of the stair going this way, it'll connect to the existing home. You know, what becomes of it then, I will list it as a family room, I don't think I will have a problem getting a CO for it from the building inspector. How it's used, I can't say.
Okay, all right. I'd like to continue this, because I think there's some things that we need to explore and get some more information.
I'll make a motion to continue this till next month?
Continue the public hearing?
Well, I mean, first of all, though, are there any other comments from your neighborhood?
I, I know there was one gentleman that was potentially coming to speak, I just wanted, didn't want to make sure.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, good, is there, there's a motion to continue this public hearing, is there? Second?
I'll say.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. Thank you very much, Mr. Freeman. Appreciate it. This is, this, your, yes. I'm sorry. When I say next, I guess, I better remember. Needs to be on the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay. Let's, Rosen. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm well. How are you doing?
Good.
I am Dawn Santiago here from Christina Ducharme Architecture, representing David and Funda at 42 Opus Road. And we are looking to put a deck on the back of the, the property, right in the back of the house off the new kitchen. The issue is that the existing house is in the setback, built in the setback, was built in 1900, so it's been there for a while. And then the deck would come directly off the back of the house, so we're not encroaching any further into the setback than already exists. So currently, the setback is a 10-foot setback for the town, and we're asking for it to be acceptable for 3'10".
And the house is currently at?
The house is currently at 3'10".
At 3'10"? Okay.
We're gonna align with the existing exterior wall.
Okay. Um, is there any other place for the deck?
We would prefer to keep it there because there's a Bilco right next to, right next to it for the access to the basement. So that's really the best place for it. Uh, we can't go any further onto the other side of the house. Do you have a copy of the site plan?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a copy of the site?
Can we see that?
Yeah, of course.
What's in red is the deck and the setbacks, um, towards the top of the page, yeah.
So over here is not possible?
Thank you. Before we go further, I apologize, I did not open the public hearing for you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No. I move, we open the public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
We can keep that for now, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have, you have a map copy of that? Okay, I had a thing.
Oh, wait a minute, we got two. There's a bigger one.
There's a big one.
Oh, you got a bigger one?
We got a better one.
No, one's without it and one's with it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so is there a door there?
Do you need an extra copy?
No.
Probably the Bilco doors.
But is there a door from the house?
Yes, so they could act.
They could act. It's pretty though.
So that's the, the ZBA application, this is the opening.
And right now, the deck is there now?
There is no deck there right now, just a, a.
This is the en, there's an entrance. In here, that would down?
Yep.
Under, will it go underneath the deck?
Uh, no, it just goes straight down into the basement.
You said you didn't want to do it off the living room. Why is that?
Um, we prefer to have like the grill back here grill off the kitchen.
What happened with the deck on the proposal became the one-story addition?
Uh, the one-story addition is already under construction for a, a separate building.
Oh, maybe do it, what?
Nothing to do with it right now. Right now, we wanted to move forward with the building permit. We wanted to move forward with the building permit, um, start working on the house and then with the understanding that we would have like a bluestone patio in the back and then see if we could get a deck or not.
The deck opens, you open on the deck from what, what part of the house?
The kitchen.
Kitchen.
Where is the door?
Uh, in the center of the deck. I think in this one, I have the building permit from that's not just. These have been submitted, this is just a building permit. But you can see here is the area of the kitchen. It's also where the old kitchen was. And we're just building right out of the.
The deck's gonna be?
Right here.
So if we had, if we had
No, it's not.
A patio, we'd have to do some larger stuff.
Follow this, follow this offset.
Decrease the size.
Good. Excellent.
And, and the, the material of the deck, what is it? Is it impervious? Is it impervious? Is it?
Cedar.
Yeah. Drainage?
Drainage to the well. Just dirt well.
Yeah.
Water, water, um.
Yeah.
Okay, so drain there. Your E, your, your down, down, your.
Down south for the main house? Believe they go over here on the back.
Show us where the, the nearest neighbor.
Nearest neighbor. Would be smaller, see right, I'm still. There's a, a driveway between the two and a fence along.
So, you know, we have a deck and people are out there having a good time and could get a little noisy, so how's that in terms of?
You have, you have a fence?
Yep, there's a, a tall fence that exists here. So there's no visual barrier and it would be the same whether or not we had a patio or a, or a.
It's not visible from the road anyway.
It's not visible from the road, it's not visible from the neighbor, shielded by the fence, created, old, old doors from the house. It's been there for a while.
Which was saying.
Yeah, I saw it, the old doors when I went up to look.
Okay, we need to finish.
But it's not.
No.
Look page two.
Okay, all right. I, I, are there any other questions? Because I think what we'll, what we need to do is finalize a resolution. Your, 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 your discussion tonight has clarified, I think, very well what, what you're looking for and what our questions are.
Yeah, if I may, can I add a few? So the deck, the length of it is 21 feet? That's correct?
I'm on my paper. I also.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Uh, yes, 21 foot six by 13 foot six.
Okay, so theoretically, the six-foot vary, you're asking for a six-foot two-inch variance. So that could be done and still accommodate the door entry to the back of the house? Since it's in the center?
What was the deck back?
Though, to move it in a bit.
Yes.
We could, it would encroach on the door a little bit, I think if we went too far back. But we could bring it in a little bit from the edge of the house.
Because I understand the intent of lining it up, but you have a house from the 1900s when I doubt the setback law was even in place, so that came afterwards, so now.
Yeah, it is possible. We prefer to keep it, uh, right along the edge if we could because it would create a weird spot between the existing fence and the house, and they have younger kids and we don't want them to have to like go in there and kind of hide in that weird corner.
And is that a six-foot fence?
Um, it is an existing tall fence, yeah.
What's that? Is it six-foot?
I haven't measured it, but they're made out of doors, so it would assume.
Six-six.
The deck will be at?
The deck would be, um, not very tall, it's just two steps up, three steps up, so probably 18 inches or so.
Well, what, 12, 36 feet, maybe three feet up? So we have three feet of fence.
Yeah.
No, no, it's 18 inches high, three steps.
Three steps.
Six inches?
So less than two feet.
Those are low steps, okay. All right, so.
Are there other similar decks in the area to your knowledge?
I, not to mine, I mean, I haven't looked to my knowledge.
Is this a new homeowner or somebody's?
This is a fairly new homeowner for maybe the past year or during COVID sometime, about two years ago. They purchased the house.
Thank you.
All right. So, um, we need a motion to continue this so we can complete the resolution.
I'll give a motion to.
Are you continuing the public hearing?
Yes, we are.
Motion to continue the public hearing until what? Next meeting, for second, second, 4:27.
April 27th. Thank you very much. This was very helpful.
Thank you.
It looks like an exciting project.
Yeah, it's gonna be really.
Yeah. Thank you for coming. Okay, moving right along here. Okay, Rosen, we did. Okay, we have a new application for enclave. Is that correct? I'm sorry, quick stop. I beg your pardon. I'm sorry.
It's all right, I'll hold it against you later.
Okay, that's all right, okay. Quick stop. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Uh-oh.
It's a little easier to be walking back and forth.
We're in trouble.
Oh, no, this is a really great project.
Okay.
You're not gonna like the first pictures though, because I'm gonna show you what's there.
Okay. Oh, yes, okay. I go by it often.
We all go by it.
Yes, we do.
So I'm not gonna spend too much time because it sounds like you guys are all very familiar with this, but my name is Brandon Petrella. I'm with Mori Architects, representing the owner for the Hyde Park quick stop. Above here, you will see that we have an aerial view of the existing site. This is nine, heading north. We have Anderson Center, would be on the west of us. This is the, I think it's KNO storage now, facility, and we have some wetlands here to the south. Uh, and then we have some private commercial undeveloped properties that kind of ramp around us on east. And we have a small stream that's actually just off-page here on east as well. This is our existing structure. You can see we have one large paved curb cut. So there's absolute free flow of traffic anywhere they want to go here. We have three pumps located here right by the street, um, and then a large paved parking area here.
Would you move your finger over your property lines from?
Yes. This is the property.
Okay, thank you.
That's the only portion. And there's also some miscellaneous storage, which we're gonna clean up as part of this project. And we have underground, uh, fuel storage tanks here. As I mentioned, we have our wetlands to the south. Our 100-foot buffer actually kind of comes across the property here and currently the underground tanks are in that buffer. So one of the big things in this project is obviously rectifying that.
They are in the 100-foot range of the creek that goes by there?
We are not. That, we're outside of that range, but it is to the east, so that, that 100-foot is probably somewhere just on this edge.
Okay.
So our property is not inside that 100-foot to the street.
Okay.
And then here is a street view of the existing structure. You can see the three pumps. We had a diesel, two regular. You can see, obviously, they need modernized, they need protections, spill protection, fire suppression protections. Things just don't exist there today. The structure is in disrepair. It, it, it needs replacing. Pavement and everything obviously needs replaced. And then again, you can see the underground fuel storage area is there. So here's the proposal. Thank you. Now I turned a little bit on you here, so I just want to reorient you. Nine is now here. This is northbound towards me, so south is here. So what we've done is first thing, as I mentioned, you know, it's, it's sort of a lot of all west coming in and out of the site. So we're targeting two curb cuts. Um, the fuel stations are now here in the front. We moved them back off the property line a little bit. They were about five or six feet away from the property line. We moved them back, one for protection from upcoming traffic, people, you know, it just didn't make any sense there. So we have four pumps at this location. We have access aisles around the pumps, so that way the people are queuing so that somebody pulls in here, pulls into their spot, and then the next person comes here. Well, this way we won't back up onto the road, so I'm gonna keep them around the other side and go to the other pump, so we.
So the, the, the cars go east and west on, on the pumps?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, yep. So north-south aisles, east-west on the pumps.
Okay, and the, and the entrances are both in, enter and exit on both of them?
Correct, yeah. We've looked at possibly doing in and outs, but because of the, the traffic that you have coming both directions and the fact that I want you to be able to use both access aisles, it actually is a little bit easier coming in and out. Now, we are currently in front of the planning board. DOT may have comments on that, so that, that could possibly change.
How wide is, are the entrances and exits? Can you tell on that, on that drawing?
I want to say that they're 24 feet, but I'm not positive. We're pretty close to that though.
Is there a lane for people to slow down? I mean, when you have, when you have no barricades there, they can come in there pretty fast, right?
Yeah, so there, there is not a turnoff lane. Again, these are all gonna be, I mean, this will be reviewed by DOT. They'll take into concern, you know, the speeds of the roadway and all those things and that. We haven't gotten those approvals or gotten to that step yet. We're just getting in front of you guys because we know we're gonna need these variances.
So we're gonna just continue this until we hear back from you after you hear from those guys?
Yeah, oh, absolutely. I think there's gonna be some comments, but we wanted to, this project hinges on the three variances that we're in front of you for, so while you may not be able to rule, we would like to get your, your feeling as we move forward through the planning board. That's, that's the intent. I understand we won't have a resolution.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, so continuing on, we are reconstructing the commercial, uh, convenience store here towards the back of the site. It's approximately 3,150 square feet. It will have a second-story office structure where he'll have his offices in. It's about 800 square feet, just a dormer off the back. What we've also done, which is one of the things I think is nice and very successful on this site, is the code requires you to have an access aisle to the rear of your building for loading. We've also used that as our diesel pump.
Gage, gage. Sorry.
That's okay. We've also used that as our, as a location for our diesel pump. We've gotten that away from the regular gas because larger vehicles come in, they block the regular pumps, they take up one or two pumps. These are very difficult turns if you've got a trailer to maneuver, so what we've done is just moved that diesel over here. We have to provide this access drive according to the code, so now we've used that to give us the bigger suites for anything with a trailer, larger vehicles. So that comes back around the building. Now, this is one-way. So this comes around the building and then you can exit through the side.
Is it only diesel at that, or do you have?
Only diesel at that location, so all your regular gas would be here.
Smart.
Yeah, keep them separated. We thought that would be good.
But you're adding more pumps?
Yes, yes. We, he currently has two regular pumps, one diesel. You can, I mean, honestly, you can only use one side and all three are tied up anyway, so, you know, this is.
So this is, that's, I'm seeing four, right?
Correct, yeah. He's doubling his regular. Both sides, yep.
Both sides, okay.
Just like he has now. He's doubling his regular amount of pumps and moving the diesel. We have to do a new septic field, so we're putting that in between the two buildings. That's located here and here. This dark line, I don't know if you can see it, but that's that 100-foot buffer to the wetlands, so we moved everything out of it. Once we move the fuel, the, uh, we wanted to get the fuel and everything as far away as possible, so once we put the pumps here, we put our underground tanks here, and that leads me to the first variance. So the first variance is this line right here that we wind up the fueling canopy with is 20 feet back, which is the minimum front yard. In this access aisle, we've actually put the underground storage tanks, but apparently they are structured. So we're asking for the variance for the underground storage tanks. There's nothing that's above grade that's considered in that variance. And again, the reason to ask that, just get it as far away from the wetlands, and unfortunately, we ate up most of the other areas that are near the pumps with the septic tanks.
So you're asking what, how far do they have to be off of, how far are they supposed to be off the road?
20 feet.
Okay, 20, so you're asking that to be instead of 20, 10?
Let me just pull out my numbers here.
Five feet, seven inches.
Five feet, seven. Okay, oh, I'm sorry.
And again, you know, these are completely underground. They're, I mean, they're defined as a structure, but I think the intent is to keep a clear yard off your property line. We're still doing that. Second variance is scale. Um, scale, the reason we get into trouble here with scale is the fact that the canopy is counted towards scale. So the canopy over these fire pumps, again, which we need to modernize the pump, fire suppression goes there, safety lighting, you know, you have to have the canopy, and, and convenience, obviously, you know, so you're not getting rained on when you're fueling. That is approximately, I want to say it's about 2,300 square, no, I'm sorry, 2,800 square feet. We're allowed 7,500, so you can see that's eating a huge portion of our scale number. And our scale number total is 9,071. So, so we're looking for approximately 1,500 square feet addition in scale, but again, that canopy eats up a lot of that and that's, just goes part and parcel with our use, which is an existing use.
Remind me, the scale is just the square footage footprint of stuff?
It is what?
Not, not the second story?
It counts the second story as well.
So you, you have, the second story is also a part of it?
Correct, yep. That's including, it also includes your required parking spaces. Correct, yep. That's including, it also includes your required parking spaces.
Similar to the dollar store issue?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And then finally, our last one is coverage, and, I mean, we have three-quarters of an acre. And we've got, again, two buildings, and it's a vehicular motivated site. Adding the access aisle in the back, which, again, required by code, allowing that diesel to go around was an advantage to having it, but all of these things add up to where we get to 80% coverage, where we're allowed 70%.
80% coverage of that property, of the three-quarters acre in your home?
Correct, 81.1%.
Okay.
And it's a 70% required. But again, I, my personal opinion, it's a huge improvement. And it's safer, it's prettier, and it's more efficient, and it meets the owner's needs. And then just at the bottom here is just one of the renderings that we showed to the planning board. This would be the convenience building. So kind of traditional style building, hip roof, asphalt shingles, some fiber cement horizontal siding. We're looking at a different, like, right now, we're presenting sort of a two-tone gray scheme, but there's conversations with the board. We're looking at the color still. So this may not be the file rendering, but this is the concept that we're moving forward with.
The commercial activity inside, I mean, is it more, more capacity there for?
He's doing, it's good, it's a little larger building, yes, but it's the same thing. It's gonna be a deli, convenience store, and then fuel sales.
All right.
And will it be open 24 hours?
I have to verify that. I don't remember. It's in the EAF. I'd have to look through.
And you have to have impervious material by the pumps?
Yes.
What about behind the building?
I would be leery to do it there, because the intent there is heavier vehicles, but I could look into it. I have not done impervious paving where it's the intent of having heavier equipment go across it. That would be my only question. I see what you're getting at, yeah.
I'm saying, no, I'm saying, make it permeable in the back.
Yeah.
To help the coverage.
I also, I don't want spills to occur. It's a fueling station. I also don't particularly like the idea of having pervious things near anything that's just fueled or is fueling.
Yeah, okay. At this point, it's planned to be impervious for the whole?
Correct, yeah. Again, it's all asphalt paving, yeah.
So, okay, so you're running a lot of, it's a lot of, basically, the whole thing is covered?
Yeah, 80%.
Three-quarters of an acre?
Yeah.
So are you collecting that rainwater?
Yeah, we have collection and treatment. That's all being reviewed with planning board, correct. Yeah, there's treatment options. In fact, the engineers are speaking about how they want that done, and I'm sure the county will also have.
Yeah, we have a creek behind it. Well, they're just outside.
Right, yeah. We also have to, we have to get a DEC permit as well, because we're doing development inside that 100-foot buffer, so that'll all be reviewed.
So we have an exterior curb all the way around?
So we have a curb that runs all the way around this portion here. We actually have a small retaining wall that runs the back, because we have to raise the site because of the septic, so it's a raised system. We come back around here, we shed some water to some other drainage, and then we return back to a curb along this portion, and then to the neighbors.
And the water that you're shedding?
It gets collected. There's actually catchings in this area that have flooded.
Okay.
To answer the question about the hours of operation, your EAF indicates it is Monday, well, every day of the week, 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I knew it was in there, though.
5:00 AM to 10:00 PM, okay.
What's all the approvals are there? What is the construction, from start to finish?
It's hard to say. I don't, I wouldn't anticipate that this would be a project that would take much longer than a year, but I will say that with an asterisk, because there's projects that I thought should take six months right now, that I can't get windows for eight months. So I don't know where we'll be a year from now, or whenever we start this project.
But he's gonna have continued operation, and you're gonna work around the business.
Well, we're gonna have to demolish the business at one point, right? And completely replace all of the tanks, so he's gonna be shut down for a duration, yeah, absolutely. He has to. I mean, we're replacing the entire site, so he'll be shut down for a good portion.
Better make sure you have all those materials on there.
That, a lot of projects won't start until they do now.
And so to verify, with the setback on the right, the 100-foot where you have the black line, the one that's to the stream, so there's nothing underground anymore?
Besides stormwater protection, yes, stormwater protection structures, things like that will be in that area, but nothing, no, we're getting all of the fuel, fueling system stepped in.
Tanks are in front, the septic is where?
So this is the septic area.
Okay.
And then our expansion is here.
Okay, all right, good.
And the 100-foot line is the DEC adjacent area to a wetland?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
And that'll be an area that you'll have to inspect every three years, no?
No.
I'm just guessing.
Have you read the new permit?
No, every year?
No.
No, leave it at that.
Once every five years?
Okay.
Is it five?
Other questions?
If this passes, I think it will be an asset.
We need to set a public hearing then.
There's no gas station between Hyde Park and the line.
Would there be enough information for next month?
The other, and the planning board chair actually brought this up, is it also gives you a little bit nicer place that you could actually, if you're going by, there's at least sort of semi-small grocery store there, you know, he can carry more things. It'll be better lit, it'll seem more friendly, and it just, I mean, he's my client, but I would never stop there until this gets done. I'm sorry, I mean, I-
I've stopped there once or twice, that's it.
You know, I just wouldn't, so.
It's a little creepy inside.
It is. Once, I've been there once, because-
You guys are really into gas stations, I can tell. Thank you. What I'd like to do is, I'd like to set a public hearing for this for next month, April 27. I'd like a motion to the Department? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Thank you very much. This is an exciting project.
Nice presentation.
Yeah, and having gone by this enough, I'm looking forward to this.
Yes, that seems to be the reaction we're getting, so I hope we can work through everything, and I will see you guys next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and now for the best. Hi, how are you?
Good, yourself?
You've had a long evening.
Ah, this is, this is one of the easier ones. It's not that long, trust me. Good evening. Ken Casamento from LRC. We represent the applicant enclave for this project, 54 Hyde LLC. We've been involved in the project since '04, when it was originally built and designed by our firm for the much larger subdivision that was there. As the economy switched back when that was in construction, that project went silent. The current owners took over the project. At the time, the McMansion House on the Little Lots wasn't really a suitable environment for what they wanted to build here in Hyde Park, so we looked to reinvent what was there and came up with a more suitable solution, which what we have now, which lowered the density from what was originally approved, but still was an increased density to what is allowed technically in the code as it is today, hence the variance that we received from the ZBA back, at this time, I don't know exactly what date it was, but a long time ago, five years or so, give or take. The project had hurdles afterwards, working through the Department of Health approvals. We went in to get into the buildings and start moving through those approvals on the sewer and water plants. We had to negotiate for demo of all the buildings that were on-site that were there. So the project started moving forward. We had demo of the buildings. We built the model home. And then COVID hit in the midst of that, so they kind of stopped a little bit of their work as well. And then they started back up again with the sewer and water treatment plants. So there, as of now, the site plan is still valid, and so is the subdivision, because that's been filed. The lots are of record. The Highway DPW permit, we need to update to reopen. We're back talking to them, because it had expired, because they, over the timeframe, the northern entrance was closed and completed as part of the solar project, because half of this project was converted. On the north half of the project, a solar company came in and used that side of it, so that, that project is done up and operating. And the wastewater treatment plant's been reapproved back in October of 2021. They're finalizing the building permit plans, so there's two sets of plans. There's the Department of Health approval plans, and then there's the building permit plans. And Gillespie Engineering is doing that plan, and has been working with Don Westermeyer about getting those plans together so that they can actually go in for the sewer and water treatment plants this year. The hope is to get them both up and operational, because they're eager to start on the five, six, and seven phase of the project and start opening houses. You know, so the goal, as of now, if we can get through everything, is to start right into, they have to do the DPW entrance. One of the discussions with the DPW is to fix that entrance and get the permit done and operational, so it's clear and ready to go. But as, with that, they'll also do the sewer and water treatment plants. The water treatment plant is 90% done already. It just requires some retesting and equipment that was sitting in there, just to reopen and get operational and run through it. But that hasn't been done until we can get the building permits in place for both those at sewer and water. So that's where we're at. One more quick one. My understanding, and Tad, you can correct me if I'm wrong, you'll see me every year until the whole project is built. So, you know, one of the questions is, this isn't a variance that we hit and we leave, and it's on the site, and the site owns it. The way I understood the variance is, it's required for us to come back to extend it every time until every single house has a CO.
Let me clarify that. Isn't it, the variance, they need to show progress on the variance, or on the work? If they start now with the variance we have given them before, they don't need an extension. Is that correct?
If they occupy, this is probably legal, but if they exercise the variance, meaning if they occupy the space, they get their building permit, they put the foundation in, and it's set up as a two-family, that's fine. They don't have to have a CO, but they do have to exercise the variance within the timeframe that's allowed by the code.
Okay, and the variance?
Is for each lot of record. So until there's a building permit and foundation for every single lot, we'll need a variance for at least one of the lots.
Okay, so-
We'll reduce the number.
So if we extend the variance for a year, we're hoping for your progress that one of these, one of these houses would be completed?
Understood entirely. We have the, Model Home has been built. That's one of them. And as well as, there's the clubhouse is there, but that was not really part of the variance, because that's, it was an existing building to be renovated. So the Model Home was built in 2018, it started, or 2019.
And was there a variance for that?
Yeah, it's one of the lots that has variance.
One of the lots of record of this variance. So we did do one, but then we were not allowed to do anymore until we had the sewer and water plants open. That was part of the deal. There's no water or sewer connection to this lot. It was just to get up and sold, so we had a model home to show. And then we had COVID and everything else, so there's been kind of a slow on that end.
Okay, so the variance that we give is on the average density?
Correct.
From 2.5 acres to 1.4 acres, and that's what we granted before. What's your, what's your estimate of what can be accomplished in the next year? Other than, we'll see you next year.
The goal right now from the owners is to have the sewer and water, because they can't do anything until the sewer and water treatment plants are under construction and ready to go. So, and that was part of the agreement as a whole. So their goal is to get those up, because we're missing a really good economy for them to, for this type market. So they're really eager to move that along. So, you know, I was told beforehand that they would love to pull, they tried to pull building permits for phases five, six, and seven, and Don said, "No, not until we're finished the other, excuse me, the other obligation of the sewer and water treatment plan." So that's where we're at.
Sewer and water treatment is, did I get it right, you're 80% or 90% complete?
The water treatment building is basically completely done. The building's done, the interior done. The sewer treatment building is built. So part of the nuance to this project is, they were all in the middle of construction somewhere when, when the project went dead. And the changes in code that has occurred since that time, both sewer, water, and building codes have meant that there was a building with walls and exteriors and electric in it, but there's no CO, there's no inspections, there was no final sign-off. So now you can't get an inspection on the electrical in a building that you can't see any of the electrical. So that's why the actual other buildings, it was more cost-effective to actually tear them down than try to redo what was there. So the sewer building, because it has critical components in it that are there, that are formed for it, they're, they're not, they're not done the same. There's no sheet rock on the walls. They're open walls, so we can do those inspections, we can do those things, but the codes changed. So the engineer that's doing the building code is working with Don to correct them and get them in sync with the building that's there, and make any adjustments to those buildings that need to be to meet today's code.
Those are two, is that the main hurdle to starting to construct the house?
Yes, yes.
And we're not, we're not giving you any variance on that. We're giving you only on the housing.
Correct.
I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, how realistic is it to figure that you're going to be constructing a house this year, if we give you an extension for a year?
I don't have that answer. I mean, if, again, we talk about supply chains, we talk about all those things. So, you know, I'm not a building, I'm the civil, I'm the site engineer. I'm not the building engineer or the architect, nor the contractor. So I don't know if there's a piece or part that we can't get right away, you know what I mean? That may take a little time, but the applicant is eager to get in and get some buildings moving.
What happens if we say, "No more extension"? When you get ready, you have to come back for another variance, a new variance?
I think we'd be into a legal discussion. I don't know that answer. Because the, the whole project was, was built on the agreement between the town planning and the other to not build the 74 units and to reduce that density down, and, but find a middle ground of what was allowed and what we, what we were hoping to do to make the project viable and not have it sit.
And what was partially installed already?
Correct, correct.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, it was, it's fully approved for 74 houses?
Correct.
That's the old?
Correct.
Now you have 50 dwellings, but they're two-family houses, so you have 100 dwellings.
No, no, you have 50.
You have 50. There's 25, I believe.
Oh, there's 25.
It's 50 total, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Then we should correct this information.
25 two-family?
Yes.
Yes.
So what do they tell you?
That makes sense.
No, there's a reduction in the-
Okay.
Forty-five two families, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
What, what was 28?
28 are currently permitted.
Oh, according to our code.
Correct.
So 50 is true.
Correct.
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, other, other questions? Okay, I think we need to set up, we need to-
Actually, ma'am, I, because the ZBA secretary sent correspondence on March 17 requesting a list of all the current and expired approvals. I understand you went through some of them verbally. Do you have that in any type of?
I don't have it for me to, for tonight, but I expected, she said in that email to come and talk about it so that we could then resubmit it. So I assume we were gonna have that conversation, and then I would follow up with that for the next meeting.
Resubmit it, yeah, that would be good.
Just with the water treatment, is that expected to be done in 2022?
Yes, the goal is.
Thank you.
And is there any additional capacity on the water treatment?
There is additional capacity on both of them. Back when, and I can attest to this side of it, because I was the one that did it, in 2004, when we, yep, and I was about this big.
You were elementary school.
In 2004, when we did the original approvals for this project, there, so, let me even go further. And I'm gonna, don't kill me on dates, in '89 or '90, there was another approval for this project that was for over 100 and something units on the site. And that never got anywhere, but the wells were drilled. The wells were tested for that project. When the client that I worked for back then took over the project, the zoning allowed for 74, we didn't- for 74, we didn't go in and test for the maximum of 124 that used to be. We went and tested for what we needed at 74. We had full capacity for that with no issues whatsoever. We then have now reduced it down to 50, so there's capacity from the 74, and then there was capacity that was originally back from that. The hope of the whole project is to get this all up and done and at some point potentially turn it over to the wastewater treatment company so that they can potentially have it. There is lines, because this was factored into the original design, the sewer, excuse me, the water main comes all the way out to, to Cream Street.
Yep.
So there is access there, should the town or anyone take over, be able to bring water in a different direction in the future. Obviously, they would have to look at the permits for the water extraction and that and modify and do some additional testing on that end for capacity, but historically it was.
Were you involved in 89?
I was not. At that point, I was still in high school, but.
Well, I think we need to, we need to set a public hearing for, for April 27th. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, good, it's very helpful, appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it, everyone.
I hope, I hope we can get this before, done, before you retire.
You and me both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other, any other business we have? If not, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment?
Double motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Thank you all, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.